The regular session of the City Council of the City of Pleasanton, Texas will now come to order at 6:42 PM. The invocation will be followed by the pledge, and the pledge will be given by Mr. Bob Byrd of Navigator's Disciple Ministries. Mr. Byrd, no, he is not here.
No, Byrd, sir.
That's probably right. Well, do we have a volunteer?
Mayor?
Ms. Israel.
I'd be happy to.
If everyone would stand, please.
Everybody bow their heads.
Please.
Father, we just come to you today thanking you, and thank you so much for the rain, Lord. Thank you for all that's been accomplished with our city and through our city council, Father. Thank you for all our citizens who are wanting to become empowered and part of the process, for all the changes that we're making as we move forward. Be with us and guide us, Father. Use us all to make this city exactly what you want it to be, Father. Watch over all of our family who may be sick, and just be with all of us as we go through this following week. We ask all these things in your name through Jesus Christ our Savior. Amen.
Now, if you'll face the bride, hand of a heart. Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. It's the roll call, Ms. Israel. Mr. Seitz, Mr. Best.
Here.
Ms. Pacifica.
Here.
And Mr. Gagels.
Here.
Note that Mr. Garza is not yet with us. Item number four is the consent agenda. Item number A is approval of the minutes of the regular session of April 2nd, 2015, and item number B is approval of the preliminary plat for Cinco Heffiz subdivision.
Mayor?
Mr. Gagels.
I move to approve the minutes for the regular session of April the 2nd, 2015, and also to approve of the preliminary plat for Cinco Jeffiz subdivision.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Item number A, approval of the minutes of the regular session of April 2nd, 2015, and B, approval of preliminary plat for Cinco Heffiz subdivision. Any discussion? None will proceed to the vote. If in favor, the motion please raise your hand. Right hand. Opposed, same sign. Consent agenda is approved. Item number five is a public hearing to receive comments and answer questions on the proposed amendment to the City of Pleasanton Master Plan 2025. Mr. Pearson, any comments before?
Not from the staff, sir.
Okay. If there is any public input, please be recognized at this time. All right, there's none, we'll move on to item number six, the citizens' comments. If you're a citizen or a taxpayer to the City of Pleasanton, you may make comments at this time. Please keep your comments to three minutes, and know that staff and council may not comment. Crickets again. Okay, item number seven, departmental reports.
Mayor?
No, sir.
There's actually two citizen comments I saw back there.
Those were probably for the agenda items.
Actually, I had a citizen comment. Did I write it wrong?
No, I didn't get the paper.
Oh, okay. Thought I put it on there.
All right, Ms. Israel, you have the floor.
I do. Let me lead the dais, though, sir. I'm going to speak as a citizen. Good evening, Mayor and council.
Good evening.
And citizens.
Please state your name for the...
My name is, uh, my name is Jeannie Israel, and my address is 910 Abilene Street. And what I wanted to just briefly speak about this evening is how proud I am to be a part of the Pleasanton Independent School District bond. I wanted a moment just to share with council, and I know you're all aware of it, but I wanted to share with council how awesome it is to have watched the process, to where we have been through two bonds already, and the school district and the citizens came together, and they found a way to involve the community and to be partners together to move forward towards a bond that will secure the future for our children and repair buildings that needed to be repaired, and will help not only with safety but facilities for our children's future in education. And I'm, as a citizen, I'm very, very, very proud of everyone who's taken part in this. I just wanted to make that statement. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Israel. Other comments? If there's none, we will move on to item number seven, which is departmental reports.
Mr. Weezer, give the Public Works Director's report this evening, Mayor, followed by the quarterly financial report by Mrs. Martinez, and we'll follow to the manager's and mayor's message from that point.
Good evening, Mayor, council.
Evening.
Good evening.
Our utility department crews continue working on replacing all the services on One Ship Road from poly pipe to copper tubing. We have also been working on replacing water meters that are no longer registering, and our well crews have been preparing to sand and paint the Hupin and the Goodwin pump buildings and equipment around the well sites. The water main project, the bore contractor completed the water line bore on Highway 97 and Parsons Road. They are now moving to the next bore site located just east of Galvont Creek. And on Thursday, April 2nd, we opened some bids for pipe and materials for our upcoming water line project, and we had a total of five bids. John Medding will be reading out our recommendations later on the agenda. Landmark, our water tower contractor, has completed the construction of the water tank column, and the crews have been working on breaking down the crane and scaffolding. Once this is done, the new crew will come to start on the water tank construction.
I can confirm they work seven days a week.
We have also made contact with Cope and Clan Engineering, and they have begun on the well site layoffs. Ascoosa River Cleaning Project, in this project, the contractor continues to do the river cleanup as weather permits. The sediment pile at the river park has been hauled off, and they are still working on the piles behind the wastewater plant and areas downstream to near Ave and Adams. A separate crew is replacing all the fencing on the properties that the fencing was removed during the clearing process. Our park department, they have been busy mowing and maintaining the public buildings and parks, and then we have also been working real closely with the Little League on the field preparations, and then we have also been setting some protocols when it comes down to canceling during rain events. The street department, the sweeper is back in service, and our crews continue to work on service orders, mainly mowing of the drainage and rightaways, tree trimming, and pothole repairs. The street intersection repairs will soon, will resume as soon as the weather permits. We are also working on getting airport phone line replaced and are getting information on setting up a handheld wireless quad reader. So that completes my report.
Any questions for Mr. Weezer? Thank you, Mr. Weezer.
Thank you.
Our finance director's report.
I'm reporting on the second quarter, which is six months, and a percentage for six months would be 50%. In general fund, we're reporting in the revenue 77% right now, so we're way over thanks to our sales tax. In our expenditures, we're still within the 50%, so we're doing very well. We're at 45%. So our profit-loss projection is $21,833. That's the budgeted revenue over our expenditures. The current period, we have a surplus of $455,152.48, and our year-to-date is over by $2.7 billion. If you go to the utility fund, we're reporting 39.31% in the revenue, on the revenue side. On the expenditures, we're at 38.75. So although we're not at 50% on the revenue side, we're still curtailing our expenditures, and we're still less than the revenue side. Expenditures are 38.75, and again, that's attributed. It's still a little early. We've had a lot of rain, which is indicative of today, so our water consumption has not been as high as it normally is, so that's why it's not at 50% right now.
Okay. Questions for Mrs. Martinez? Thank you, Mrs. Martinez.
Thank you.
Item number eight, city manager's message.
Good evening, Mayor and council. How are you all this evening?
Good, how are you?
I'm here this evening, and we're glad to see County Commissioner Carroll, first of all, thanks for coming, and Donna and her folks from the Crisis Center. Mrs. Israel asked for an overview of the new proposed Water Conservation and Drought Contingency Program. You'll see it behind the title page of the manager's message. I won't get into a lot of the particulars, but I will speak to some of the things that are important to all of us. As you can see, the column on the left side there is what we have in our existing drought contingency and water conservation plan. If you look to the right, that's what's in the new proposal. We have several public education components, an overview and an introduction in the new one that was not in the old one. We also have a utility profile for public education, which speaks to our pumping capacities, how many wells we have, the type of wells, the type of water, and that type of thing. Also, as you move on down under public education, I won't be, I won't list all of those, but everything in there lists anything from leak detection to meter testing, all the way through plumbing fixtures, our water rate schedule, water conservation where landscaping is concerned, and obviously some really important things where customer service inspections, backflow assembly testing and installation are concerned, which is regulated and dictated to us by the state under Rule 2946. Also, you'll see under drought triggers, as we move on down the list, we are reducing from five stages of water conservation to four. There's going to be new addition to the stages. As you move on down, there isn't a section two that addresses wholesale contracts. If we were to hook our water system up to somebody that would buy water wholesale from us, say another water supply company or another municipality, they obviously have to abide by our water conservation and drought contingency plans if we continue to sell water to them after we declare certain stages. Additionally, there's some things there where definitions, abbreviations, and acronyms are concerned. The biggie, in our opinion, has to do with how much can our citizens water, when can they water, and how often they can water. Under the present plan, our citizens are under a three-day watering schedule every week, every week of the year, around the clock. With the new plan, we feel like our citizens use good discretion. They can water at their discretion. Let me repeat that. They're under a...
Oh, I'm sorry.
They're, they're under a three-day watering schedule under the new plan until we declare a stage they can water at their discretion. The one thing we did do is we looked at the watering hours presently under the new plan. It's seven at night to 11:00 in the morning. We feel like during the extremely hot times of the year, sometimes at 7:00 in the evening, it can still be 93 to 98 degrees. At that point in time, the water, the plant is shut down to keep itself from dehydrating. Watering is not going to do any good except for cooling the grass off. As far as water absorption is concerned, we feel like the better hours would be to start at 8:00 in the night, 8:00 o'clock at night, because the sun is beginning to go down, temperatures are starting to drop, the plant is starting to open its pores, especially during the hot times of the year. The plant will grow at night. We also reduced the time for the same reasons from 11:00 to 10:00 in the morning, because as you all know, as we get into the hot part of the summer, July and August, sometimes it can be as hot as 93 to 98 degrees by 11:00 in the morning. Now, 98's a little extreme, but it's oftentimes we see it between 93 and 95. So that is the only restriction, if you will, we put in the new plan that was not in the old plan. I'll stand for any questions or comments at this point.
Questions for Mr. Pearson.
Mayor?
Israel.
Mr. Pearson, I just would like to thank you for the amount of time that you took to explain exactly what we were doing in this ordinance, and I'm very appreciative of... To me, the major benefit, a gift here, is the fact that we're going to be able to water any day that we want to the week. And the one thing you didn't mention that I'd like to ask you to would be the difference between where we are now, when we would be in a stage one, and where we, where, how many gallons it will take to get to stage one. And without just turning it over to you, I appreciate all the education and conservation issues as well.
Well, thank you, Ms. Israel, and that's a very good point. Under the old plan that was designed and put forth in front of the council in 2009, and by the way, you have to update these plans or redo them or amend them every five years, so we're due. The old plan said that we reach $2.5 million a day for three days, and we have to go into stage one, okay? Under this plan, we declare stage one when we hit 65% of our pumping capacity. Backing up just a second, in 2009, as I've heard the mayor and Ms. Israel and others state from time to time, when Mr. Martinez and ultimately now Mr. Weezer gives his report about how many gallons a day we're pumping, a million a day back then was a huge day. Who would have thought in 2009 we would be sitting where we're at today? Our pumping capacity is actually 11.2 million gallons, and we declare, we want to declare stage one when we hit 65% of that capacity, which is around $7 million and change. So we have a lot of latitude. We still want folks to get more educated and be more water conservation-wise, but we have a lot more latitude, Ms. Israel, and I appreciate that comment. I did, I did not mention that before we declare stage one, about 5 million gallons worth to be...
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Best.
I just want to say this is an excellent piece of work. This is very beneficial to the citizens in every step of the way. You know, you dotted all the i's, crossed all the t's. This is a wonderful piece of work.
Well, I have to lend all that thanks to Mr. Weezer, Mr. Medding, and a consultant we utilized on that. I'm just kind of the face of it right now, but I did review it, and we made changes once the first draft. So really, all the appreciation and the thanks need to go to Mr. Medding and Mr. Weezer, and I applaud them.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Other questions for Mr. Pearson?
Thank you, council. Moving on to our next item on the manager's message, Cronos Project Update, which is our electronic payroll system the council directed us to purchase. There was another go-to meeting today with Mrs. Martinez, Mrs. Lozano and Mrs. Martinez. I stepped in several times, and I quickly realized I needed to get out of the room. I can tell you, our clocks are mounted. Most of our clocks are live, we're waiting for a switch to be mounted in one facility to have an additional port for the clock. The clocks are registering central time. I think one of the Mrs. Martinez even went out and put her fingerprint on it and clocked in her employee number, and she's into the system now, so we'll be monitoring her time pretty closely from now on. But the next step in the process, and we're working on the interface between ENCODE, our software program, which houses all the payroll, we're working on the interface. Ms. Bandi's working on that diligently. I think that Cronos was told to give them the file today, so the interface should be complete within the next four to five days. There will be, there will be training to bring all the employees online with fingerprint and employee ID over the next week, week and a half, by the ladies that were involved in the process, and this will begin to the process of putting the managers in the room and training the managers on how to look at time each pay period, how to approve leave time, and so on and so forth. So we're very happy with it at this point. Our project schedule at this point is to go live with two runs, beginning the pay period of May 7th and then May 21st, where we will still process paper time sheets while at the same time using the system. Based on Mrs. Lozano and Mrs. Martinez's latitude and their opinion, at that point, we would make the decision to go live and let the paper documents go. So as you can see, it's been an all-consuming project. We're getting close, but now the training will begin with the managers and the employees on getting them into the system. Our budget for 2016 and schedules will be forthcoming towards, to the new council as they're sworn in. We're going to follow much of the same budget as we, schedule we followed last year, but I can tell you that we feel very comfortably, there was a meeting this morning between Mrs. Martinez, Mr. Weezer, and the chief, and I, and we are comfortably ahead of where we've been any time in the last three years. Mrs. Martinez will begin plugging numbers in based on the wants and the needs of the department heads, and then herself and I will begin analyzing what those totals are, and then meeting with each department head to revise some of those budget figures. Upcoming city council meetings, I'll leave it to the latitude of the mayor. I will say that we have been working with Dr. Cuellar's office for him to be here at the night of the transition. It does not look like he can make it because of commitments out on the West Coast and others. We, in conversations with the mayor after the last meeting, we did find that we had a conflict on May 19th. I have to admit, it was my conflict, my wife being awarded Teacher of the Year at Comel ISD that night, and I feel like her husband ought to be there. So with that being said, he asked me to propose to Dr. Cuellar Monday, the 18th, or Tuesday, the 26th, and those dates do not work for him either, but we're supposed to get a proposed schedule of dates that he can be here after that, and we would just ask the latitude for the council members who will transition off if they could indulge us to come to a meeting when Dr. Cuellar can come. So at that point, I'll leave it up to the mayor to call the date of the meeting. I think his preference when he and I talked earlier was the 18th, which would be a Monday, so we'll leave it up to his latitude and the council's latitude and their decision-making on that. We will still follow that same schedule with a meal at 6:00 PM, and fellowship, followed by the gabbling of the meeting at the Civic Center by the mayor, and the transition after approving the minutes will shortly take place after that with the swearing-in of the new council, and I think the plans are, we can't have barbecue without having a piece of cake and some ice cream, so I think there will be a short reception after that.
While we're on that, I propose the 18th. Does anybody have an issue with that? It's the Monday prior to the normally regularly scheduled meeting. If there's not any, let's just put it in for the 18th.
Mr. Secretary of the City, Monday 18th.
Do we have any trouble? That was going to be part of my message, but I'll just do it now since you've already talked about it.
Yeah, and we...
Is there any problem with the canvassing and any of that? If there's no issue, let's do it the 18th.
Okay, and we will notify our community partners who are going to participate in that meeting and helping prepare the meal and some others as we move forward. We had a meeting with them this week. They're flexible.
What time did we say for the meal?
6:00.
All right.
Civic Center.
It's the Civic Center.
Yep, across the street. So we'll get to skip item 10 now.
Okay.
Mayor, I have one last item under a special announcement. It's with great emotion that I publicly announce, as many of you already know, that Mrs. Carroll has submitted her retirement about a month and a half ago to Mrs. Martinez and I, and she said after 28 years, it's time. I ask her and Commissioner Carroll to come to the meeting tonight as my special guests. We will have a lunch for Mrs. Carroll next Wednesday from 11:00 to 2:00 in the Civic Center with our community partners involved.
She's not here.
Outside.
Oh, okay, she is there. I know she was here earlier, now she's hiding.
She must be sneaking.
She's hiding.
Too warm, chief. I will tell you that we'll never replace Mrs. Carroll because of the relationships we built, she built, and those can never be replaced. We do have someone in the chair to take that seat over.
Very qualified.
Beth, I will miss you.
I'll miss you too, but I'm not far.
You were always... You have always been a reason for me. You have always known when stress is mounting, and you've always known when to put your head in the door and tell me I'm already wrong again, and I appreciate that. With that, I would like to read this signed by the mayor and I to you, and if we could at the end of this, Mayor, we'll ask Mrs. Carroll to say a few words, and if we could indulge the council to come off the dial.
Mrs. Carroll, he does that to me all the time.
That's come from foreign wine, and they want pictures, so...
Oh, boy.
Beth, from the City of Pleasanton, in my office, we recognize Beth Carroll for delivering the ultimate in customer service to the citizens of Pleasanton, Texas, and out of Escosa County through 28 years of dedicated service. It's my pleasure to present this to you, Beth. She's going to say a few things.
Yeah, very few.
Bill, there's no supper tonight.
There wasn't any last night.
There wasn't any last night.
I appreciate this. It's been my honor to serve the city, and mostly to serve the citizens, and I hope that I have shared the knowledge that I have learned with the citizens in hopes that they can better prepare themselves for what they need to do to take care of themselves. And I've enjoyed every council member, all the PD, all the other employees, and I'll miss you. Like I said, I'm going down the street.
That's it.
Thank you.
Can I come down for...
He can indulge us to come down and get a picture with Mrs. Carroll. We'd certainly appreciate it.
I'm sorry. I'm so sorry. I am so sorry. You know?
Yeah, we can be both.
Say, stand up, Beth.
Thank you very much. All right, as we're all making our ways back, just remember also that next Wednesday, the 22nd, 11:00 to 2:00 reception for Miss Carroll. And where's that? That's at the Civic Center?
Yes, it's a question for the council and staff, and she has asked that we invite some special guests, and that's from 11:00 to 2:00. We'll be posting the closing of the facilities from 11:00 to 2:00 Wednesday.
All right. Item number nine is ordinances and resolutions. Item A is second reading and adoption of ordinance number 15-1141, adopting a water conservation and drought contingency plan for the City of Pleasanton, Texas, and establishing an effective date. Ordinance number 15-1141 is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Pleasanton, Texas repealing and replacing Title V, Chapter 51 of the City of Pleasanton Code of Ordinances Adopting a Water Conservation and Drought Contingency Plan, establishing data, information and policies for water conservation programs, criteria for the initiation and termination of drought response stages, establishing restrictions on certain water uses, establishing penalties for the violation, and the provision of enforcement of these restrictions, establishing procedures for draining variances, and providing severability and effective date.
Mayor?
Mr. Gagels.
I move to approve the adoption of ordinance number 15-1141, adopting a water conservation and drought contingency plan for the City of Pleasanton, Texas, and establishing an effective date.
That can... I moved and seconded to adopt ordinance number 15-1141, adopting a water conservation and drought contingency plan for the City of Pleasanton, Texas, and establishing an effective date. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Best.
What is the effective...
in purchasing a new, a new facility at a new location, and they are asking for this, the city of Pleasanton's support, which I totally support that organization. I think it's very much needed for our citizens, and we're very fortunate to have had them here the years that we've had. And Mr. Pearson had recommended or had suggested that we pledge a twenty thousand dollars toward this facility. I spoke to Donna Fisher, I guess his executive director, and she said they have had other commitments on pledges toward this building, and this building is in District Four, and it will meet their needs. So I think that it is very important that we continue to support the Atascosa Family Crisis Center.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Best.
I move to support the move of the Atascosa Family Crisis Center at a donation of twenty thousand dollars towards the purchase of the new facility, funds to be utilized from the general fund.
Moved second to move the Family Crisis Center to twenty thousand towards the purchase of a new facility, funds to be utilized from the general fund. Any discussion?
Mayor, I'd like to amend the motion to pledge the twenty thousand dollars instead of donation.
So you're, you're moving to amend by striking out donation and inserting pledge?
Yes, that's correct.
Mayor, is, is there, can I ask?
We're waiting on it. The, the motion's been made, we're waiting on a second.
Make a second, I'll make a second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded amendment motion by striking out donation and insert pledge. Any discussion?
Mayor?
Mr. Sizra.
Mr. Gagos, I, I don't know, I'm just, I'm just asking why the difference.
I think with the pledge, since they're, they've had other pledges, the money has not been raised for the purchase of this building, and as Donna and I spoke, that if, for some unfortunate reason, they're not able to purchase the building, then the city will keep the money. And a pledge is if, if they're moving forward to purchase it, then the money will be there. Is that correct, Donna?
All right, any other discussion? If none proceeded, the vote on the amendment, all those in favor of the amendment, please raise your right hand. Post same sign, amendment carries. Amended motion is to move the Atascosa County Family Crisis Center and a pledge of twenty thousand towards the purchase of a new facility, funds to be utilized from the general fund. Any discussion?
Mayor, I'd like to amend the motion to pledge the twenty thousand dollars instead of donation.
So you're, you're moving to amend by striking out donation and inserting pledge?
Yes, that's correct.
Mayor, is, is there, can I ask?
We're waiting on it. The, the motion's been made, we're waiting on a second.
I'll make a second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded amendment motion by striking out donation and insert pledge. Any discussion?
Mayor?
Mr. Sizra.
Mr. Gagos, I, I, I don't know, I'm just, I'm just asking why the difference.
I think with the pledge, since they're, they've had other pledges, the money has not been raised for the purchase of this building, and as Donna and I spoke, that if, for some unfortunate reason, they're not able to purchase the, the building, then the city will keep the money. And a pledge is if, if they're moving forward to purchase it, then the money will be there. Is that correct, Donna?
All right, any other discussion? If none proceeded, the vote on the amendment, all those in favor of the amendment, please raise your right hand. Post same sign, amendment carries. Amended motion is to move the Atascosa County Family Crisis Center and a pledge of twenty thousand towards the purchase of a new facility, funds to be utilized from the general fund. Any discussion? None proceeded, the votes in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Post same sign, motion carries.
Mayor, the, some of the folks in the audience that represent the media have asked if the council would indulge them to come off the dice and get a picture with Donna.
Okay. All right.
Let me get your tongue. Picture, picture tongue, again, again.
Pleasure, whatever.
That's exercise, right? Yeah.
Can you get it? Can you get it?
I need another one.
I see, can I move you out slowly? There we go. All right, are you ready? One, two, three. Okay, good.
One more.
I don't know if I can breathe.
All right, how was that? Congratulations.
All right, item number twelve, discussion action to award a bid for the water utility pipes and associated valves, service lines and fittings for Crestline to IH thirty-seven Utility Project. Mr. Manning.
Evening, council.
Evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Recently advertised our project for, for two weeks on segment two and three for the materials for the water line for the city of Pleasanton. The project was advertised in the local paper. Results of the bids are, are shown in the, in the bid tabs. Five companies submitted bids for the project. A substantive alternate bid was requested for each segment of the project to, to give options on, on two class, pressure classes of pipe. In both cases, it was determined the heavier pressure class, DR eighteen, was a better application considering the price differential. It should be noted that, that, that bids were considered for all five companies, and it was determined that HD Supply Water Works was the best bid that offered all materials in accordance with the bid documents. It's appreciated that some of the firms offered lower cost alternatives, but we feel that it's in the city of Pleasanton's best interest to go with the, the parts specified. With that, I want to introduce Mr. Kevin Claggett with HD Supply.
He drove all the way from Corpus from a convention for this meeting, I might add. Thank you, Kevin.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
He will be the, the gentleman that, that we're dealing with along with Tom Maxey, Thomas Maxey from, from their San Antonio office, and they'll be taking care of us, making sure that, that we get all of the, all of the parts that we need. And with that, my recommendation to council is, it's my recommendation that council direct city staff to award the project to HD Supply Water Works for the amount of eight hundred six thousand four hundred twenty-three dollars and eighteen cents.
Mayor?
Mr. Gagos.
I move to approve the recommendation to direct city staff to award the project to HD Supply Water Works for the amount of eight hundred and six thousand four hundred and twenty-three dollars and eighteen cents.
Second. Can I get you to add for the Crestline to IH thirty-five Utility Project?
Yes, for the Crestline to eighty-one, uh, Crestline and thirty-seven project.
Mr. Pacific, can you maintain your second?
Yes.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to direct the city staff to award the project of HD Water, Supply Water Works for the amount of eight hundred six thousand four hundred and twenty-three dollars and eighteen cents for the Crestline to IH thirty-seven Utility Project. Any discussion? None proceeded, the votes in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Post same sign, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Manning, and thank you for driving up. Item number thirteen is discussion action to accept the fire station feasibility study. Mr. Pearson.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, earlier this evening at the work session, Heath and Stephen from RVK presented the feasibility study, which basically places the new fire station when built approximately four hundred feet south of the Goodwin and Airport Road intersection off of Airport Road. Your options are in front of you this evening. The staff's recommendation that the city council accepts the feasibility study for the placement of the new city of Pleasanton Fire Station on Airport Road approximately four hundred feet south of Goodwin.
Mayor?
Mr. Gagos.
I move to approve the, to accept the feasibility study for the placement of the new fire, the new city, let's see, placement of, the new city of Pleasanton Fire Station on Airport Road approximately four hundred feet south of Goodwin.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to accept the feasibility study for the placement of the new city of Pleasanton Fire Station on Airport Road approximately four hundred feet south of Goodwin. Any discussion? None proceeded, the votes in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Post same sign, motion carries. Item number fourteen is discussion action to accept the fire station placement and floor plan. Again, Mr. Christian.
Thank you, Mayor. Earlier this evening in the second phase of the work session, Heath presented the actual placement of the fire station on the property and how it would lay out, as well as the schematic floor plans. We asked that you look at your options. The staff recommendation is the city council accepts the placement and floor plan for the new city of Pleasanton Fire Station on Airport Road approximately four hundred feet south of Goodwin.
Mayor?
Mr. Gagos.
I move to approve to accept the placement of the floor plans for the new city of Pleasanton Fire Station on Airport Road approximately four hundred feet south of Goodwin.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to accept the placement of the floor plan of the new city of Pleasanton Fire Station on Airport Road approximately four hundred feet south of Goodwin. Any discussion?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the feasibility study for the placement of the new city of Pleasanton Fire Station on Airport Road approximately four hundred feet south of Goodwin.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the placement of the new city of Pleasanton Fire Station on Airport Road approximately four hundred feet south of Goodwin.
Second.
Any discussion? None proceeded, the votes in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Post same sign, motion carries. Item number fifteen is discussion action to accept the fire station renderings. Mr. Christian.
This was the third part of the work session, which actually gave an aerial and a ground level view of the appearance of the fire station from the outside with projected materials. Sign, as you can see, we would like to keep with the historic red sandstone. We have already had a preliminary discussion, myself with Mr. Hill, who provided the sandstone for the Freedom Center. He said he would do whatever he could to help the city. Your options are in front of you. The recommendation from council is that city council accepts the renderings for the new city of Pleasanton Fire Station on Airport Road approximately four hundred feet south of Goodwin.
Mayor?
Mr. Gagos.
I move to approve to accept the renderings of the new city of Pleasanton Fire Station on Airport Road approximately four hundred feet south of Goodwin.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the renderings of the new city of Pleasanton Fire Station on Airport Road approximately four hundred miles south of Goodwin. Any discussion?
I asked, yes, I asked the chief to edge initials on one of those rocks, one of those stones, because we're not gonna be here to see this project completed, or at least three council members.
We have him for good, good news, coming right down the pike here.
None proceeded, the votes in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Post same sign, motion carries. Item number sixteen is discussion action to direct city staff to utilize construction manager at risk procurement method for the construction of new fire station. Mr. Pearson.
This was not discussed in the work session. As we move through our next steps in the process, in the discussion action item, you can see, step one has been accomplished, step two has been accomplished and is also in process. We're asking the council to, instead of using a best value bid, a competitive bidding process, but rather we would like to use the construction manager at risk. It has proven to be very successful for agencies in the last few years, a number of agencies to continue to employ it. The difference with the construction manager at risk is the general contractor or the construction manager would be brought on during the design document and construction document phase. They would work with the architect and all the design disciplines, as well as the city, and cost the project all the way through design. To recap, you go through design documents, twenty percent, fifty percent, so on, to a hundred percent. That is pretty close to construction documents. All through that phase, you're making tweaks, and when you get to a hundred percent design documents, you then move into the construction document phase, which moves pretty rapidly. At the end of the construction document phase, the general contractor or the construction manager would then give the staff a guaranteed maximum price. And we feel like that has been very successful for Pleasanton, as we employed it with the Civic Center Library Project. What it does is it works to eliminate any chance of change orders. We didn't have any kind of change orders. We had to come to the council over with the maximum guaranteed price on the buildings across the street. The process, I won't go through it step by step, but it talks about the important steps that will follow from here, and which ones are very key, if you will, which are really all of them. Where our options are, your options are in front of you, council, and the staff's recommendation is direct city staff to utilize the construction manager at risk procurement method for the construction of the new fire station.
Mayor?
Mr. Gagos.
I move to approve the city staff to utilize the construction manager at risk procurement method for the construction of the new fire station.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to direct the city staff to utilize the construction manager at risk procurement method for the construction of the new fire station.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to direct the city staff to utilize the construction manager at risk procurement method for the construction of the new fire station. Any discussion? None proceeded, the votes in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Post same sign, motion carries. Item number sixteen is discussion action to accept the fire station placement and floor plan. Again, Mr. Christian.
Thank you, Mayor. Earlier this evening in the second phase of the work session, Heath presented the actual placement of the fire station on the property and how it would lay out, as well as the schematic floor plans. We asked that you look at your options. The staff recommendation is the city council accepts the placement and floor plan for the new city of Pleasanton Fire Station on Airport Road approximately four hundred feet south of Goodwin.
Mayor?
Mr. Gagos.
I move to approve to accept the placement of the floor plans for the new city of Pleasanton Fire Station on Airport Road approximately four hundred feet south of Goodwin.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the placement of the floor plan of the new city of Pleasanton Fire Station on Airport Road approximately four hundred feet south of Goodwin. Any discussion? None proceeded, the votes in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Post same sign, motion carries. Item number fifteen is discussion action to accept the fire station renderings. Mr. Christian.
This was the third part of the work session, which actually gave an aerial and a ground level view of the appearance of the fire station from the outside with projected materials. Sign, as you can see, we would like to keep with the historic red sandstone. We have already had a preliminary discussion, myself with Mr. Hill, who provided the sandstone for the Freedom Center. He said he would do whatever he could to help the city. Your options are in front of you. The recommendation from council is that city council accepts the renderings for the new city of Pleasanton Fire Station on Airport Road approximately four hundred feet south of Goodwin.
Mayor?
Mr. Gagos.
I move to approve to accept the renderings of the new city of Pleasanton Fire Station on Airport Road approximately four hundred feet south of Goodwin.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the renderings of the new city of Pleasanton Fire Station on Airport Road approximately four hundred miles south of Goodwin. Any discussion?
I asked, yes, I asked the chief to edge initials on one of those rocks, one of those stones, because we're not gonna be here to see this project completed, or at least three council members.
We have him for good, good news, coming right down the pike here.
None proceeded, the votes in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Post same sign, motion carries. Item number sixteen is discussion action to direct city staff to utilize construction manager at risk procurement method for the construction of the new fire station.
Second.
Any discussion?
I asked, yes, I asked the chief to edge initials on one of those rocks, one of those stones, because we're not gonna be here to see this project completed, or at least three council members.
We have him for good, good news, coming right down the pike here.
None proceeded, the votes in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Post same sign, motion carries. Item number sixteen is discussion action to direct city staff to utilize construction manager at risk procurement method for the construction of new fire station. Mr. Pearson.
This was not discussed in the work session. As we move through our next steps in the process, in the discussion action item, you can see, step one has been accomplished, step two has been accomplished and is also in process. We're asking the council to, instead of using a best value bid, a competitive bidding process, but rather we would like to use the construction manager at risk. It has proven to be very successful for agencies in the last few years, a number of agencies to continue to employ it. The difference with the construction manager at risk is the general contractor or the construction manager would be brought on during the design document and construction document phase. They would work with the architect and all the design disciplines, as well as the city, and cost the project all the way through design. To recap, you go through design documents, twenty percent, fifty percent, so on, to a hundred percent. That is pretty close to construction documents. All through that phase, you're making tweaks, and when you get to a hundred percent design documents, you then move into the construction document phase, which moves pretty rapidly. At the end of the construction document phase, the general contractor or the construction manager would then give the staff a guaranteed maximum price. And we feel like that has been very successful for Pleasanton, as we employed it with the Civic Center Library Project. What it does is it works to eliminate any chance of change orders. We didn't have any kind of change orders. We had to come to the council over with the maximum guaranteed price on the buildings across the street. The process, I won't go through it step by step, but it talks about the important steps that will follow from here, and which ones are very key, if you will, which are really all of them. Where our options are, your options are in front of you, council, and the staff's recommendation is direct city staff to utilize the construction manager at risk procurement method for the construction of the new fire station.
Mayor?
Mr. Gagos.[1745.25]
I just might add, at the proper time, we would come back to council and tell them, tell you all, we're moving forward, because you've already given us the direction to do it.
Mayor.
Sizra.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion.
Please.
I'd like to make a motion to direct the city staff to proceed forward with the design and construction of the new fire station with discretion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to direct city staff to proceed forward with the design and construction of a new fire station with discretion. I'm glad we didn't have to add the 400 feet south of Goodwin again. Any discussion?
I haven't memorized.
That was almost like a Seinfeld rerun, wasn't it?
If there's no discussion, we'll proceed to the vote. If in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand, pose the same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you so much, council.
Thank you. Item number 18 is a report on the HOT fund balance, city's responsibility to use funds collected. Council member Israel.
Yes, Mayor, I would like to ask Mr. Pearson to just give us a quick rundown. He gave me a report, you should have one, I think, in.
Seventy-nine of the packet.
And the way I understand, the way I understand the actual fund, as we have, what has been promised and so forth, we have an approximate balance left in the fund of about $500,000.
Actually, it's about 800 plus.
And this is after we've already spent, we've already given the organizations the money, it's deducted the 100,000 for the museum support and everything?
Yes, ma'am, that money has been transferred for the museum.
That money has been transferred. And of course, that, is that also subtracting the $50,000 for a digital sign?
No, ma'am, that sign was in the budget two years ago, and the prospective placement of the sign was to be considered out here by the Civic Center.
Right.
But because of right-of-way issues and text dot, it did not get implemented, or it did not get installed, and we did not put it in the budget for this year.
Okay. That's all I wanted for the report. I pretty much am familiar with the responsibility of the city to, the responsibilities of the city as far as the use of the hot funds towards advertisement, and the percentages and for what you can use it for as far as the visitor center. But I don't know that there is an exact estimate that the city is allowed to move forward with their, I, you know, to keep in the fund balance itself.
I have tentatively looked at it. I've tentatively had discussions with the city attorney. There doesn't seem to be any kind of levy as to how much you can keep in the fund, what the actual ordinance or what the actual law says under the government code is what a city may use the funds for, which is about 12 different things, and it gets really into some minute stuff as far as.
Right.
Populations. But then it prescribes what the proper allocations are, and I think it's 15% on promotion and advertising, 15 or 16% on the arts and music. But that's all we have at this point. We have not seen anything that emphatically tells the city they have to spend it every year.
Okay. Anybody have any questions on that?
I have a question.
Mr. Gagos.
Mayor, is that going to be put back into the budget as far as the digital for this coming fiscal year?
If we find a place that we can put it where it can be visible to our citizens, I would say absolutely, Mr. Gagos. Another alternative spot we looked at was up on the front of the police property on Oak Lawn. But as we looked at it, because of the curvature of the road, we can turn the sign to face some folks, but the oncoming traffic can't see it at all. So we would explore that opportunity if that's the only placement.
Before we get too deep in that discussion, we have an agenda item that will address that.
Yeah, number 20.
Any other discussion for item number 18?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Best.
Would upgrades of the website be considered advertising?
That would have to be an interpretation by our city attorney. If it goes to attract tourist folks, you know, tourism to our town. But, you know, some cities use it a little more loosely than others, or a little more liberally than others. As you know, we're just in the second year of the program of having folks be accountable for the grants they're receiving, and so that would have to be, we would have to ask the city attorney for that.
Thank you.
Other discussion? Alright, moving on to item number 19, discussion action include a feasibility study on the Longhorn Museum expansion and parking lot drainage, already provided by council on March 4th, 2015, regular council meeting, and adding the cost of possible renovation. Council member Israel.
Yes, and normally I'd like to make a motion, but may I, I would like to have a few comments before I do that.
Please make them brief.
Let me remind you that it's like only 25 till, so we're doing good. They won't be long. What I wanted to say here is that the word feasibility can mean many things. And what I, the reason I put this on here is because Mr. Pearson brought up a good point about possible renovations to be included with the already approved motion by our city council to expand the museum by 10 to 15 foot and include parking and drainage in that expansion, and use hotel motel funds for that. But I was trying to be frugal, so I didn't include all the renovations that are obviously possible to assist the museum to operate in a better manner and serve even more people who visit it. So I am, the one thing that I have concern about is using the word feasibility would allow for later on to do a study whether or not it's actually necessary or necessary in that area. And I felt like that the council as a whole realized last time during discussion that where the museum sits is a good place to keep it, and that expanding it and giving a dedicated area for traveling exhibits and art exhibits is also a good thing. Parking is certainly something that if we lose part of the parking, that we do need new parking, and we do need to look at drainage. So I like that, along with the renovation. Now, where I have to ask is, just for a quick direction, I'm ready for the motion, sir, but after the thought process, the way I have it written is including a feasibility study. Would I be able to not include a feasibility study, but instead use a cost estimate?
Well, you have adding a cost of the possible renovation, so that would, I would think the intent of that would be what you're talking about.
Thank you very much. So what I would like to do is make a motion then?
Please.
I'd like to make a motion to not include a feasibility, but instead include a cost estimate on the Longhorn Museum expansion with parking and drainage already approved by the council at the March 4th, 2015, regular council meeting, and add the cost of possible renovation.
Second.
It's removed and seconded to include a cost estimate study on the Longhorn Museum expansion with parking and drainage already approved by council on March 4th, 2015, regular council meeting, and adding a cost of possible renovation.
Mayor, staff has just one comment. A cost estimate would be a part of a feasibility study. The feasibility study, I mean, you know, tonight we had placement where we're going to build it. This feasibility study would be, what do we have to do to the building? What do we have to do to bring the building up to code? What do we have to do where ADA compliance issues are concerned? What do we have to do with parking? What do we have to do with fire protection? And all those things that go into, once that building is touched for renovation or expansion, it has to be brought up to code. So the cost estimate would be a part of that feasibility study and what has to happen to that building.
I agree. I wish, I wish that feasibility wouldn't, you seconded it.
Will we amend it with, if somebody is interested in amendment, could it be with a different word than the word feasibility?
It could be whatever they want. But the way it's written right now, all we're going to do is a cost estimate.
Alright.
Can we amend it to feasibility?
If you would like to.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Best.
I would like to amend the motion to strike cost estimate and replace it with feasibility.
May staff suggest that you say feasibility and cost estimate? That way it's clearly stated that it's going to be both.
I don't have a second yet.
I would say cost estimate and feasibility.
Second.
Alright, it's been moved and seconded to strike cost estimate, or not strike cost estimate, to add feasibility.
That's correct.
Alright, all's in favor of, or any discussion on the amendment? Move to the vote. If in favor of the member, please raise your right hand, pose the same sign. Amendment passes. The amended motion is to include a cost estimate and feasibility study on the Longhorn Museum expansion with parking and drainage already approved by council at the March 4th, 2015, regular meeting, and adding the cost of proposed renovation. Any discussion? None will proceed to the vote. If in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand, pose the same sign. Motion carries. Item number 20, discussion of possible action on HOT fund money already budgeted for digital sign in the amount of $50,000 to display upcoming events, example, cowboy homecoming, DP, MA, market days, baseball tournaments, and communicate city information, city council meetings, water outages, emergencies, 70% events, 30% city. Ms. Sizra.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Please.
I'd like to make a motion to do a feasibility study for the digital sign that already has money budgeted for, in the amount of $50,000, and consider placing it in front of City Hall.
Second, second.
Andreas, I hope you got that.
Again.
It's a, it's a, it's a tad bit off the way the agenda item's written.
Is it? Possible action on hot fund, on hot fund money already budgeted for a digital sign? So the action would be to do a cost estimate, a feasibility study, which would include a cost estimate, and place.
Hang on just a second, let me, let me, let's get the motion stated first. Andreas, please repeat what you have written.
Discussion action on hot fund money already budgeted, or on hot fund money already.
On the digital sign.
Do you have it written down, Ms. Sizra?
No, I didn't write that one down.
Mayor, I can take a shot at it.
No, it has to be me or Andreas, so.
It's.
So discussion of possible action on hot fund money to conduct a cost estimate feasibility study for digital sign in the amount of $50,000 to be placed in front of City Hall?
That's good.
Okay, any discussion? If not, we'll proceed to the vote. If in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand, pose the same sign. Motion carries. Item number 21, regular session of April 16th, 2015, is hereby recessed. We're executive session pursuant to chapter 551 of Texas Government Code, subchapter D as pertaining to personnel matters, 551.074. Executive session matters may be discussed in open session if appropriate. Time is 7:44 PM. Regular session of the city council of the city of Pleasanton, Texas, is now reconvened at 7:53 PM. Item number 24 is discussion of possible action concerning the appointment of the state secretary.
Mayor.
Mr. Gagos.
I move to approve the appointment of Andres Aguirre, Aguirre, as the Pleasanton City Secretary for the city of Pleasanton.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to appoint Mr. Andres Aguirre as city secretary for the city of Pleasanton. Any discussion?
Mayor.
Ms. Sizra.
Yes, I'd just like to say that I believe Mr. Aguirre is doing a really great job, though he doesn't quite have a great sense of humor. I would like him to work on that. That's my only comment.
I will tell you that there was some discussion after the session to, to look a little somber when we came out here to kind of mess with you a little bit, because you've messed with every single one of us, so.
I noticed that when he started picking up his paper, it was like.
If there's no other discussion, we'll proceed.
Yeah, Mayor, I'll just. Mayor, I have a quick comment. I think that Andres has done a good job. I'm still giving him some pointers, and I will continue until probably my last meeting, which is not in next month, and a couple of more meetings. But Andres, keep the, keep doing a good job, take care of the council, take care of your job, and all of the staff, because the city secretary plays a large, a big part in operating a city. And I've always said, there's, behind a successful city and city manager, there's a good city secretary. So keep that up.
If there's no other discussion, we'll proceed to the vote. If in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand, pose the same sign. Motion carries. 25, review of the bills. Ms. Sizra.
Mayor.
Yes, we'd like to congratulate you.
Back to the pool.
Mother's question.
No, Mayor.
You raised a fine young man. Item number 25 is review of the bills. Mr. Gagos.
No, sir.
Mr. Pacifica. Mr. Best.
Mr. Stein.
Ms. Sizra.
No.
Item number 26.
Mayor, I move to adjourn.
Second.
Moving to second, we adjourn, if in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand, pose the same sign. Meeting is adjourned at 7:56 PM.